Good evening, welcome to the November 3, 2010, meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a forum presence, I'll call the meeting to order at this time. The first item on tonight's agenda is to approve the minutes of October 6, 2010. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, I'll declare them approved as submitted. We have one public hearing scheduled for this evening, that is a proposed amendments to the city sign ordinance, Chapter 25, 1-4, related to plan development and BP and GDO overlay zone signage, development ID signs, and sign permits, fees, building and codes pardon is that. Ms. Kerr, good evening.
Good evening, thank you Chairman Lamb, members of the commission. For several months, staff has been working on amendment to the City of Murfreesboro sign ordinance to better accommodate signage needs for an ever-growing population of PUD signages. The PUD signage was at a definite disadvantage when compared with the signage allowed within PCDs, PIDs, projects in the GDO and BP overlay zones that are not PUDs. Staff ultimately concluded that the best approach was to combine three sections, GDO 1, 3, 4, and PUD, the PCD and the PID, and the GDO 2 and BP into one section and maintain a constant size and style of signs allowed in these zones. We're going to begin reviewing the packet with tab number four in the package that you have. That is where the most significant proposed changes have been made. The ordinance as it is today addresses three types of building types or development types. The chart that is before you, I'm going to bring it up on the overhead. If you look at the chart before you, the first three categories are the signs, building types that are currently used in our current ordinance, that is single tenant, multi-tenant with separate outside entrances, multi-tenant with common outside entrances. We are proposing to add three additional types of building types within developments, that would be a single building on a single lot with a combination of multi-tenant, separate outside entrances, and common outside entrances, single lot with multiple non-residential use buildings, and then a single building, I mean, single or multiple buildings on a single lot mixed vertically. Additionally, we are proposing that the newly formulated district be formatted to include all types of signs used throughout the city into this one particular type of zone. If you look on the left side of the chart, that shows you all the different types of sign categories that are used throughout the City of Murfreesboro. If this format is accepted, we will propose amendments to the format of the zones within Chapter 26(c), to be consistent with this layout for every zone within the city, and that will be to help applicants when they are looking at the ordinance to try to be able to determine what signage they will be allowed to use. I'm going to now go through each type of the different building types in the left-hand side for the categories. Currently, the building ID signs are only allowed in Gateway 1, 3, 4, and PUD as a freestanding wall sign. At the interest to a building or a building group, we propose to allow attached building ID signs on all buildings within a development two or more stories. Currently, we only allow the freestanding wall signs, we're going to request that we no longer use the development freestanding wall signs and go strictly with the attached building ID signs. These signs will be required to be at or near the top of the building and only contain building name and identification. A building six stories will be allowed a larger attached building ID sign, and all those buildings will be allowed to have four building identification signs, one per side of the building. I'm going to show you a picture of the building ID signs as it would be proposed. This is a building that is proposed to be built in the gateway. This would be a multi-tenant, common outside entrance unless they determined they were going to put separate outside entrances on the front of the building, then it would be a multi-tenant, common outside entrance, and separate outside entrance combination. But as you can see at the top of this building, on all four sides of the building, they would be allowed to have a building ID sign. We don't feel that this would be a problem because you can't really see every side at any one given time. The next building type of sign on your chart is a building material sign. They are currently only allowed in the commercial highway, heavy industrial, light industrial zones, and we recommend that this category of signs be allowed within this district as a portion of allowable attached signs on a building. This type of sign would be like the Harley-Davidson emblem sign that is made of drive it and it's engraved into the side of the building using the building materials themselves. The next category on your list is going to be canopy signs. Canopy signs are like a gas station, freestanding canopies. They are not currently allowed in any GDO or BP overlay. Because of the likelihood of a gas station going into the GDO, BP overlay, staff felt that it would be sufficient to allow them to be able to have building canopy signs within the Gateway District overlay. And with these canopy signs, they would be allowed to have push-through illumination only, or canopy-mounted indirect illumination or non-illumination. The next category of signs I'm going to talk about is automated and manual changeable copy signs. I'll speak about this further when we get to tab five. These are currently allowed only in GDO 1, but are not allowed in PCDs, PIDs, PNDs, and PRDs. Because the restrictions already in place for these signs, it does not appear necessary to treat GDO 2, 3, 4, and PUDs any differently than GDO 1. Staff proposes to allow these types of signs in accordance with Section 26(c)(10) as a portion of allowable signs. Complex signs is the next category, and they would be allowed with properties with 100 feet of frontage and one sign for each street frontage that the building fronts. There has to be 50 feet of spacing between the signs on each individual lot. If you have, you know, two properties sitting next to each other, it's only the signs on a single property, not your neighbor's property and your sign. All these signs will be requested to be a consistent size of 100 square feet, with the exception of a single tenant, their sign would be, I'm sorry, all of them would be 100 square feet, except for a single tenant, they would be 60 square feet. All of them would be 16 feet overall height, and they would also be made of brick-and-mortar base or a stone-and-mortar base. And I'll show you a picture on the overhead of complex signs. If you look on your picture that's in front of you, this is the Hillwood Development on Highway 96. This development has four different sections. It has an apartment section, it has a single-family dwelling section, it has a condominium section, as well as this red area which is the commercial section. When the commercial section, these signs would be allowed to have the complex sign at the front of each one of the lots that this may be subdivided into. Currently, the way the ordinance reads, this whole development would be allowed one development ID sign at 40 square feet, eight feet overall height. With the way that we're proposing it, that each development would be able to have the development ID signs as well as the complex signs. Complex signs are not currently allowed in PUDs. Only development ID signs and building identification signs, which are 21 square feet and eight feet overall height, and for a lot that may be subdivided and have a 10 unit, a separate outside entrance building put on it, a strip center, they could have 21 square feet of signage for all 10 of those tenants in that complex. All those signs again may be at 16 feet overall height. PUDs are an extreme disadvantage when located within a PUD in the GDO 1, 2, 3, 4, as the next-door neighbor signs could be much larger than the PUD. The next category we'll talk about are the development ID signs. That will be discussed later in tab seven of your packet as well. Development ID signs have been a significant concern for staff for quite some time. I have a copy of page four that I have placed in your information that shows you the discrepancies between the different types of signs that are allowed in each one of the different types of zones. In RS zone, they're allowed two per development entrance maximum. In Office General, there's one per development, if it's five acres or less, two per development if it's more than five acres. In the BP overlay GDO district, it's two per development. In the GDO, it's one per development, I mean, GDO 1, 3, 4, and PUD, it's one per development. PCD, PID, it is one per development. So we felt like that it should be, that it would be beneficial for proper identification of a development entrance to allow two development entrance signs at 40 square feet each and eight feet overall height. And I've got a picture of a Hillwood Development again. Again, we have four different sections, and the residential sections have numerous entrances into the facility, so one development ID sign just does not suit the needs of this particular development. There again, at each one of these entrances, you would not see the signs of the other entrances where the signs would be located. Also, on the inside of the development, there are numerous entrances into separate sections, into the apartments, into the condominiums, and into the residential zones. They would be allowed to have two development entrance signs, 16 feet, excuse me, eight feet overall height and 40 square feet. A single building with a single tenant would not be allowed a development identification sign. Complex signs and development identification signs would be required to be freestanding wall signs which are constructed of brick-and-mortar base. The next type of sign we talked about is the entrance flag signs. These are not currently allowed in any commercial zones and would not be proposed to be allowed in this zone. Flag signs are currently allowed, and they would continue to be allowed in accord with the current regulations throughout the city. Interstate onsite signs, off-site signs, and outline lighting will not be allowed in this zone. Routing signs will be allowed within developments with multiple buildings where they are currently only allowed within the Gateway 1, 3, 4, and PUD. Take for instance, the Waterstone Development in GDO 3. They have numerous streets which direct you to different buildings throughout the Waterstone Development, so if you come to a stop sign, a routing sign is going to be in 10 square feet, eight feet overall height, that will give you directions to the Pediatric, Centennial Pediatric, or the Pertle Building, or the First Tennessee Bank. It's just a directional sign that will be allowed within this zone. Currently, tenant attached signs are allowed in all zone types. The proposed changes would increase allowed signage for single building and multi-tenant buildings with common outside entrances from three signs per building to four signs per These signs would be located on one side of the, could be located on any side of the building, but they can't have any more than three signs on one side of the building. So they could choose to put three of them on the front and one on the side. Buildings with multiple tenants, and actually, I have a picture of that one, I can show you what I'm talking about. This is a single-tenant building. This is the proposed Walgreens that's going to be going up at Medical Center Parkway and Thompson Lane. They would be able to have a sign on their single-tenant building on all four sides. The next picture is again the proposed building that is a common outside entrance building. They would be allowed to have the building ID signs or the tenant attached sign, say if it was an AT&amp;T building, they could have AT&amp;T building as their tenant identification sign or the building ID sign, not both. Buildings with multiple tenants and separate outside entrances would continue to get one attached sign unless they're a corner tenant, where they would be allowed two signs, both of them on separate sides. Currently, if someone wants to put a sign on the side of a building, if they're a corner tenant, they would have to have a public ingress and egress into that building. We propose that they should not have to put a door on that side of the building in order to have a sign on that side of the building, and I do have a picture of that one as well. As you can see, these tenants on the front would get one tenant ID sign, attached sign, and then the corner tenants would be allowed one sign on each side of the building. And that concludes tab four. We can have questions now, we can stop here and have questions, or I can complete the rest of the presentation and answer questions at the end, whichever you desire.
Why don't you go ahead and finish, and then we'll hold our questions.
Now if you'll turn to section, or tab two in the program book that you have. This section is the definitions section. These are the new and revised definitions that are required to appropriately define changes made in tab four. We propose to add categories for major and minor tenants. A major tenant would be defined as a tenant with 10,000 square feet or more. They would be allowed four signs on their building, three of which could be on one side. Minor tenant would be defined as a tenant that has 10,000 square feet or less, and they would be allowed one attached sign unless they are again a corner tenant. We also have some revised definitions to remove regulatory language and put the regulatory language elsewhere. It gets confusing for an applicant when they try to make an application and they think they're following all of the guidelines within the zone, when there is some regulatory information that are in the definitions that they do not understand that that's where they are. So we're taking them out of the definitions and putting them into the actual section that they belong in. Tab three covers the spacing of signs on a lot, as I mentioned earlier, we are requesting that they require to be 50 feet apart on each separate lot. The next section is tab five. If we can look at tab five, that is about the automated and manual changeable copy signs. And I do have this information that I can put on the overhead. The restrictions on these signs currently in place with the ordinance include: background of a constant, changeable portion of a sign must be of a single constant color, the copy or message displayed may not be changed more often than once every hour, lighting and size are subject to the provisions of Chapter 25 and a Quarter which are applicable to other signs in the zone district where the sign is located, and all of the provisions and limitations of 25 and a Quarter which are applicable to signs in this zone where the sign is located apply to these signs. Staff believes that with these limitations, automated and manual changeable copy signs will not be offensive in the gateway. Also, for greater clarity, we propose to add background a single color and change one time per hour provisions in Section F which allows an automated changeable copy sign to be added to an off-site permanent sign. This change was added after we had our stakeholders' meeting. Now tab six, this section is the proposed temporary signage amendments. Banners are not allowed in residential areas of a PUD, but they are allowed in commercial sections of PUD. We will allow them to, we are requesting that they be allowed in this zone, but that they would not be allowed in a Gateway District overlay or a BP overlay. We are requesting that you allow inflatables in the Gateway District 1, 2, 3, 4, PUD and non-residential sections of a PUD for three consecutive days, which must include a Saturday and a Sunday. That would be like a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or a Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, and they can do that one time a year with a permit. The third proposed temporary signage amendment would be to increase the number of temporary signs from one temporary sign to three temporary signs in all GDO zones 1, 2, 3, and 4, and P, non-residential portions of PUDs. Again, that would be from one sign to three signs. That's the way it is in the rest of the city, so we thought it would be applicable to have them in this portion of the city, and the size of those are 32 square feet, and they can't be any higher than 10 feet overall height. Now tab seven. And tab seven discusses the development ID signs. For consistency purposes, development ID signs provisions would be revised to allow the same size and number of signs for all sections of 25, I mean, section, Chapter 26, two per development entrance, 40 square foot display, eight feet overall height. Again, the reason for this is apparent from the information previously presented with the discrepancies in the different numbers of signs in different areas. Differences among the various zone districts in relation to a number and size of development entrance signs do not appear to be warranted. The proposed amendment in tab seven again will allow two per development entrance for all zone districts including BP and overlay districts. Tab eight is concerning permitting requirements. The permitting requirements will not change in substance. The amendments will clarify the information required for permit application process, will clarify the inspection process, and will increase the number of days for approval of a sign application from three days to 10 days. Tab nine discusses fees remaining, the fees will remain as the current fees. We do propose to add a $75 final inspection deposit requirement on sign applications to encourage applicants to finalize their permits. This portion would be adopted separately by resolution, not by ordinance, as most of building and codes fees are adopted by resolution. I do have additional pictures to show to just give you an idea of what the developments would look like with these types of signs incorporated into them. This is Gateway Village on Thompson Lane. As you can see, there are three multi-use buildings that could be mixed vertically, and they could be multi-tenant, separate outside entrance, common outside entrance, which have three buildings on one lot that all require different types of signage. Each one of the buildings would be allowed a building ID sign on all four sides, one sign per side. If the tenant on the lower floor is a separate outside entrance retail unit, it would be allowed a tenant ID sign, one per tenant, unless they're a corner tenant, then they would be allowed one per side of their tenant space. At the front of the facility, you'll see that they would be allowed to have development ID signs because they have multiple buildings within the lot. They would be allowed two development ID signs at 40 square feet each, eight feet overall height. They would also be allowed a complex sign at 100 square feet, 16 feet overall height. This is where the disadvantage came in for this particular development when it came through. Originally, they would only be allowed to have one development ID sign, and it would be 40 square feet, eight feet overall height. When across the street, the building, the strip center building there had 100 square feet of signage and 16 feet overall height. This was one of the reasons that we found that there was a great need to be able to accommodate the signage within these facilities. Then I have another layout. This is Parkway Plaza that fronts Thompson Lane and Medical Center Parkway. This is a development that has two lots on it, two buildings on one lot, one of them is a strip center with separate outside entrances, one of them is a multi-tenant, common outside entrance, could possibly have condominiums on the top floor, that would, that would make signage changes difficult with the current ordinance the way it is. So what they would be allowed on the property itself, they have three entrances into the property, one on Thompson Lane and two on Medical Center Parkway. At each one of those entrances, they would be allowed, if they so choose, to put two development entrance signs at all three of those entrances, they would be 40 square feet, eight feet overall height, and would say Parkway Plaza. They would also be allowed on that second lot to be able to have a complex sign, one on Thompson Lane and one on Medical Center Parkway. Those signs would be allowed to be 100 square feet, 16 feet overall height. The corner tenant at the first front part of the property is, that's where the new Walgreens is going in, that's a single tenant, so they would be able to have a complex sign on Thompson Lane and one on Medical Center Parkway as long as they're 50 feet apart. They would be allowed to have 60, I mean, 60 square feet and eight feet overall height. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Ms. Kerr, thank you for an excellent presentation, Ms. Jones.
Thanks for all the pictures, that really, that helps us a lot, that was wonderful. But I do have just one question, and it was regarding the major tenant space.
Yes, ma'am.
Really, my first question was just, is 10,000 square feet, is that kind of a standard among commercial, you know, developments, that 10,000 is a major tenant and less than 10,000, or did we come up with the 10,000?
We went through our records to look to see what size buildings were that we had, like the Target Strip Center, the Target Store, the Joann's Fabrics, the Party City, they would all qualify as a major tenant. So we tried to look at the types of buildings that were out there already and adjusted according to what we felt was reasonable for those, for the signage for those buildings. If Target sat in a position where, you know, they had another road running behind them, they might would want to have another sign on the backside of their building showing where Target was.
Okay. And I had a question just in regard to our definition on page 22 of the, where we're talking about a major tenant versus a minor tenant. And so, for example, for major tenant space, it says, "A tenant space in a building with multiple tenants, which space contains 10,000 or more square feet." And see, for me reading that the first time, when it refers back to which space contains 10,000 or more square feet, I wasn't sure whether it was talking about the tenant space or the building space, and so I just wondered if we might, you know, if you said, well, you all may come up with some other examples, but, "A tenant space, comma, in a building with multiple tenants, comma, which contains 10,000 or more square feet." That's the definition of major tenant space, possibly.
I think it's a very good point.
Something for, you know, the person just reading it right off the bat, and I know y'all have looked at it a lot, but I was a little confused there because I was just trying to figure that out.
That's a great point, we'll certainly take a look at that.
And it would be the same thing then to the very next minor tenant, the very next full section. But, great presentation really, thank you so much.
Ms. Jones, I got two questions. Mr. Young.
Give me a definition of inflatable, or describe inflatable, because we all have different perceptions of what.
Inflatable would be a device that has any type of mechanism within it which blows air into it and inflates it, whether it be the stick man out in front of a building that waves back and forth, or a balloon that's blown up that flies over the top of a building, one that sits on the roof of a building that is inflated and sits stationary.
Our infamous gorilla?
Your infamous gorilla would be an inflatable, yes, sir.
All right, okay. Now, my next question is, tell me about the stakeholder meetings.
Stakeholder meeting, we had on October the 6th, we had one at 10:30 in the morning, we also had another one at 5:30 that evening, we had, I think, eight in attendance between both of the meetings, there was no objections to anything, everybody was quite pleased with the recommendations that we were making to simplify and help the businesses in the area with more signage. How we notified people? We had about 116 notices that we sent out to all of the sign companies that we deal with, developers that we deal with, and we sent it out by email as well as hard copy. We did send them a full packet of information. We did tell them in the email that we would be sending that so that they would not print that off and kill a few more trees, so that, we did notify them. We notified them after we presented this briefly before planning commission to set for public hearing. The day after we presented, y'all, we sent it to the stakeholders.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? If not, we'll go ahead and proceed with the public hearing. This time, I'd like to open the public hearing and invite anybody to come forward that'd like to speak pertaining to this proposal. Ms. Kerr, you did a wonderful job, apparently. Ms. Kerr, you did a wonderful job, apparently, because I don't see anybody coming forward. See nobody coming forward, I'll close the public hearing. I'll do any other comments or questions by members of the Planning Commission. Once again, I want to thank the, Mr. Whitaker and Ms. Kerr and Mr. Ives and everybody else on the staff that spent so many hours working on this, and we realize this is a document that's going to continue to undergo revisions and updating and changes as the technology changes and we discover new things that need to be improved on as far as we were handling. So thank you very much for your hard work on this. All that being said, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for approval for the recommendation of this proposed amendments to the city sign ordinance.
A point of certification on your motion. You very well identified some editorial changes that need to be made to major tenant.
I read, even though I was supposed to say.
Major tenant.
Was it a recommendation?
And I would want your motion to allow us, the latitude, to edit those in light of the discussion that we had to clarify that.
Sub move.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. We'll move right on to Plats and Plans. We have seven items under Plats and Plans this evening, the first of which is Keith Bertrand preliminary plat for two lots on 1.41 acres, Zone Commercial Highway, located along John Bragg Highway and Lassiter Drive. Keith Bertrand, Mr. Velfer. Ms. Logan, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman Lam and members of the Planning Commission. The first item before you tonight is a preliminary plat for two lot subdivision located between John Bragg Highway and Lassiter Drive. Currently, there is an existing car wash facility that fronts on Lassiter Drive, and it is one lot of record. They wish to divide this property into two lots with their being furnished on John Bragg. This, staff have reviewed this, and we asked for a preliminary plat because we wanted to ensure that services were being extended to the second lot, which included utilities and access. The access drive that is currently existing is not current standards to provide access to the two lots. Therefore, they are showing an improvement to that drive access to show a minimum of 22 feet wide with an extruded curve to provide access to the future lot two, or to the future current lot. The preliminary plat work that is shown must be completed under our new subdivision regulations. Those improvements must be completed before staff will be able to sign the final plat for recording. We have no additional comments. This plat is in good order.
Any questions from the Planning Commission?
So the law would be access from Lassiter Drive to a lot?
That's right. We, that section of John Bragg is limited access, and so we wanted to ensure that we could provide access to the new lot from Lassiter Drive.
If there's no further questions, we're ready for a motion.
Move for approval, subject staff comments.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next item is the Cloister, Section 4 and 5, preliminary plat for 24 lots on 6.17 acres, Zone PRD, along Cloister Drive, O'Brien Lloyd LLC Development. Ms. Logan.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This preliminary plat is a continuation of the Cloister subdivision, and it is for Sections 4 and 5. It's a preliminary lot for road continuation of Cloister Drive with also two cul-de-sacs to be constructed with a total of 24 lots. And we haven't seen a preliminary plat for residential subdivision in a while, so we're excited to see some, hopefully, some more building occurring in our residential markets and this being the beginning. And this plat is in good order, and I would like to note that we do want to ensure that the FEMA floodplain line, there's still little question as to whether it's shown exactly correct on the plat. We've been working, although the elevations may not match what on the FEMA map, what's in the field, you cannot alter a FEMA map line. I mean, if that's where FEMA has shown it, that's where it has to be shown on the plat unless you have approved a letter of map revision through FEMA. So we want to ensure that that line is shown correctly. And other than that, we have no additional comments at this time.
I want to ask Ms. Logan about one of the staff comments that's written.
Okay.
I think we already fixed it, but we didn't see this.
The engineer record will be required to certify the work performed in this subdivision as discussed with the city engineering department at the completion, as expected, at the completion of this project. Apparently, I had a typo in my text, so I wanted to make sure that that was corrected. So it's now bred into the record.
Ms. Logan, I have a question, please.
Yes, sir.
How would you pronounce the street down at the bottom that says local beside it on the plat?
Where is it? Oh, that one.
Off the ball.
You sure we don't have that somewhere else in the city?
Fortunately, E911 has already confirmed that this isn't a preferred street name.
We may have another that sounds like that, but I don't think it's spelled that way.
See, I did all that.
It's called the drive.
Mr. Bill Host said we're running out of names, so.
He did submit one earlier on this plat that was rejected, so, but the names before you tonight have been approved by our emergency 911 communications department.
Any other questions? We're ready for a motion.
Chairman, make a motion for approval, subject all staff comments.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The next item is the Cloister, once again, Section 4, final plat for 11 lots on 2.93 acres, Zone PRD, located along Cloister Drive, O'Brien Lloyd LLC Development. Ms. Logan.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This is the final plat for Section 4 of the preliminary plat that we just discussed earlier. And this will be along Cloister Drive. We want to make sure that it is noted. It is noted on the plat, but just for anybody who may be at home watching or listening, that there has been fill placed on lots 131 through lots 137, and those are, require compaction reports. Those compaction reports must be submitted to us prior to the building permit, so just putting that out there. Also, these lots lie in the 100-year floodplain, and they'll be required with elevation certificates issued or received by the city as part of the building permit process. Otherwise, this plat is in good order.
Homeowner Association, Mr. Ailat, on these sections, be in with the other sections of this development?
They can be, or they can be separate, since these are technically separate subdivisions. It's preferred that they do combine, but it's not necessarily mandatory, as long as they have the ability to perform their responsibilities to maintain those common areas.
Any other questions? No, we're ready for a motion.
Move for approval, subject all staff comment.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next item, once again, the Cloister, Section 5, final plat for 13 lots on 3.24 acres, Zone PRD, located on Cloister Drive, O'Brien Lloyd Development. Ms. Logan.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This is Section 5 of the preliminary plat that you reviewed just a couple of items previously for the 13 lots in this section for residential. This section is in good order. This section does have certain lots that are corner lots that have side loading garages, and those have been noted on the plat so that the builder and the owners are aware of the requirement when they purchase the property, and so they'll be noted, so that it's noted, and there's no question when they come in for building permits. Otherwise, there's no additional conditions for this section. And I would like to just note, and it's in the comments, that both of these sections will be complying with our new subdivision regulations in terms of, as you know, our new subdivision regulations became effective in March of this past year, well, 2010, it's not over 2010 this yet, but earlier this year. And as part of that, they will be installing sidewalks on both sides of the street. It will be four-foot sidewalks because that's a continuation of the rest of subdivision. We, if it was a new subdivision, we would require five-foot sidewalks, but previously on some of the smaller streets, there were not sidewalks, but they will be installing sidewalks on both sides of the street. And the improvements to each section of the subdivision must be installed at least to certain point before we will sign the final plats. Again, something that is a requirement under our new subdivision regulations. So they're noted in the comments, and the design engineers are fully aware, but I just thought I'd take an opportunity to just let you guys know how we're approaching that with these, with these subdivisions, with these new sections.
Thank you. It's just good to see some residential subdivisions coming through for approval.
Ah, it's great.
Any questions? No, we're ready for a motion. Chairman Lam, I'll make the motion we approve this, subject all staff comments.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to item E, which is Salem Glen Resubdivision of Lot 9, final plat for three lots on 13.101 acres, located, Zone Commercial Fringe, located along New Salem Highway, LF2 Salem LT is the development. Ms. Logan.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This item before you tonight is a resubdivision plat of Lot 9, located at the corner of St. Andrews and Highway 99. It's the property where, if you've been out there lately, it's the home of the new Publix Marketplace. And this property is before you tonight, it wasn't able to be reviewed or approved by staff at an administrative level because three lots are involved. And under state law, we only had the ability to review lots of two, two lots or less, plats of two lots or less. So it's what's before you tonight, but the lot lines are shifting slightly. And the out parcels have always been there, and this is to change the parcels slightly and to make the corner out parcel a little bit larger so that they can service a potential future user. And nothing's been submitted to me yet, so I don't have really any exciting news to tell you about what's going on that corner, but we do know that they have a potential user that's looking at it, and that they need a little more property to be able to proceed forward with their development plans. Otherwise, this plat is in good order.
We're ready for a motion if there's no questions.
Chairman, move for approval, subject all staff comments.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item L is Tyus and Rogers Site Plan for 4,453 square feet on 1.1 acres, Zone OGR, located along Maple Street. David Tyus is the developer. Ms. Logan.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This site plan, you all have seen a concept plan for, and if we could bring up the screen, I'll show you the aerial of where this is located at. This lies along North Maple Street, between North Maple and North Walnut. They actually own the home of Hassan Rogers Law Office, actually fronts Maple Street, and they own the property all the way to Walnut Street. They want to be able to construct a second building on that property, and the property is large enough to allow for a second building to be constructed. It would be another office building, and that is the rendering of what they're proposing to build. And then I'll, I'll get to that in a second, but the lot has two main buildings on one lot of record, so it must come before you for approval. You all reviewed a concept plan for it to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals in terms of, to grant a setback variance from North Walnut Street. And the reason that we were supportive of that variance was that in that area, we felt that a 42-foot setback was a little excessive and wasn't urban in nature, which this neighborhood tends to be, and that a building set closer to the street would frame the street and would be more indicative of the neighborhood that surrounds this area. So this is the building that they are proposing. It's an all-brick structure, two stories with pitched roofs, and is very similar to some of the architecture in the area. And we're really excited about the proposed building architecture that they're proposing. One of the items that you may see that hasn't really been shown on your site plan is the improvements to North Walnut Street that are required under the enhanced Main Street master plan. And the enhanced Main Street master plan called for on-street parking, decorative lighting, additional landscaping with street trees and sidewalks in this area. The city, because of the location of this, the applicants attempted to show it on their original site plan, but what it would take to be able to construct something like that mid-block with not having that Main Street master plan being, having been developed on either side was going to cause a situation where you would actually have on-street parking that would only be striped, and you'd have to shift a lane with striping only and come back. Staff felt that that just really was not in the best interest of the traffic in that area, and that from a safety standpoint and from just trying to make sure that we follow things correctly through that area, that it would be better to take payment in lieu of, through our city engineering department, that happens quite a bit with our city engineering department, and that eventually, at some point, we'll work through that area to, that the city would look at installing those improvements on a block-by-block basis with a future road project through that area on North Walnut Street, just so that we're not trying to do these piecemeal in-between blocks and having, you know, problems as we go forward, and also not knowing what the plans are for any of the properties around it to redevelop, and that, you know, the timeframes for that are so unpredictable right now that we're just trying to find the best way for implementation of that plan. And so that's what we're asking you to approve tonight. And there's a note that's been placed on the site plan by the design engineer that they would provide the payment in lieu of the construction.
No, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no questions, I would like to make a motion to approve, and also just comment that I was not here when we reviewed this the last time, and I didn't get to see the concept plan, and it's just beautiful, and I'm excited to see something like that going in downtown. I think it's wonderful improvement for that area, and so I make a motion to approve, subject all staff comments.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. And the final item under Plats and Plans is Westwood Baptist Church, a site plan for 9,936 square feet on 10.61 acres, located, excuse me, Zone R15, I guess that's RS15, located along Brinkley Road, Westwood Baptist Church, app.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
It is RS15.
It's RS15. Yes, sir. This property that is before you tonight is at 1320 Brinkley Road, and it is located outside the city limits of the city of Murphysboro, but is being serviced as an outside-the-city sewer customer, and therefore must come through you all for site plan approval. And this use is a permitted use under county zoning for place of worship. This, if it were located in the city of Murphysboro, it would require a special use permit under similar zoning. However, because it is a permitted use under county zoning and they have the control over the use classification in the zoning, then that has already been approved through the county as well as the site plan. But I just wanted to make sure to clarify that in terms of how it goes through our process from a use standpoint. But the site plan has to come before you tonight, and the site plan that you see has been improved upon and is now showing extruded curve around the paved areas, any new paved areas, complete with landscape islands and landscaping around their solid waste areas and landscaping along their rear access drive. The, the proposed building that they are doing, which the county planning department and county planning commission have approved, is a combination brick metal siding building that will be approximately 12 to 14 feet tall in areas with a small drop-off canopy, and it will sit in behind the church in the current area that if, if you look on the aerial on the screen, it's a little bit small picture, so it may be hard to tell at home, but there's a gravel area right behind the church, so this will sit in behind there. So it really, it won't be in front of the church, it'll be to the back of the property. So that is what we're asking for approval tonight. The site plan is in good order.
If there's no questions, Chairman Lam, I make the motion we approve, subject to staff comments.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. That concludes the Plats and Plans portion of our agenda. We have one item under Gateway Design Overlay Review, that being North Church LLC, Section 4, final design review for the preliminary plat for two lots on 2.28 acres, CM Gatton Trustee and Tommy Smith Developers. Ms. Logan.
Yes, sir. And if we could go to the screen, I just want to get you all and the people at home oriented with where this preliminary plat is located. And this is a two-lot preliminary plat located at the corner of Gresham Park Drive and Medical Center Parkway. It is the two lots adjacent to the Chamber of Commerce, and there is a master plan for the rest of the property that they own, included in your agenda items, and I'll discuss that as part of the preliminary plat. But the preliminary plat that is before you tonight is for these two properties. These two properties are Zone Commercial Highway, and they have frontage again along Medical Center Parkway, and of course, Lot 2 has frontage along Gresham Park Drive. And it's directly adjacent to the new Chamber of Commerce building. The master plan that's before you tonight shows a 10-lot subdivision for the The master plan that's before you tonight shows a ten-lot subdivision for the remainder of the portion of the property that's directly east of Gresham Park Drive, with future properties being developed along Medical Center Parkway. And we have shown on there where staff believes that those access points should be located. Those access points are going to have to be common, shared access points to serve those properties, and they've been identified as such on the master plan sheet located within your preliminary plat packages. You should have a master plan sheet within your preliminary plat package. The, um, one of the things that staff has really been working hard on, and that we discussed some during our initial design review meeting of this, was right-turn lanes. The city requires a, in this area, requires a one-hundred-foot storage with a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot taper for right-turn lanes to access these properties. We are willing to work on the design of those properties as each of those sites come in and develop in the future as the preliminary plat for that section comes in, because they haven't even submitted a preliminary plat for this, this is only the master plan. But as of right now, staff has a belief that it will inevitably necessitate continuous right-turn lane there along Medical Center Parkway to be able to access these lots appropriately. Now, the design engineer is not of the same opinion, he feels that the turn lanes do not need to be that same, have as much storage and taper, but that is that staff feels that when you design the right-turn lanes with a hundred-foot storage and a hundred-and-fifty-foot taper, that essentially you'd have all turn lanes except for a couple areas of cutting in and out, and that we feel it would be better served with a continuous right-turn lane, similar to our situation across the street over at the avenues. So, that's what we're planning for in the future. They are showing the right-turn lanes to be constricted and the design to be determined at the preliminary plat and master plans, or in the site plan stage for those lots, and we're acceptable to that, but we just wanted to get it into the record about how we feel the design of those right-turn lanes should be addressed. The, um, one other item that was discussed quite a bit during the initial design review of this preliminary plat was the responsibility of the crosswalks that are required under the Gateway Streetscape Master Plan on both Gresham Park Drive and Medical Center Parkway. The Planning Commission required staff to go back and work with the applicant and the owner and to try to come up with a solution on how to approach that. Today's current solution that is before you is that each corner of those lot, each corner lot at the corner of Medical Center and Gresham Park Drive would be responsible to construct one leg of the sidewalk until all four were complete. That's exactly the way that First Tennessee did. If you go out to the First Tennessee Building today and look at their site, as part of their site plan, First Tennessee constructed their plaza, their corner plaza that's required under the Gateway Streetscape Master Plan. They installed their street trees and decorative lighting as required under the Gateway Streetscape Master Plan. They installed their sidewalk as required under the Gateway Streetscape Master Plan, and they did one leg of the crosswalk across the southern portion of Gresham Park Drive as required under the Gateway Streetscape Master Plan. The property owner has gone and worked with the city manager and spoke to the city manager on this issue because he felt that the city of Murphysboro should be responsible for installing the crosswalks across Medical Center Parkway. But at this time, as far as staff knows, no resolution has come to that except for the fact that each one of the property corners will be responsible to construct one leg of the crosswalks. And that's what they have so noted on their preliminary plat, and that's what we're asking you to approve today. That's what they have noted on their preliminary plat, and that's what we're asking you to improve. The implementation of who does which crosswalk will be determined at the site plan stage as each one of those sites are developed. And it will be determined then, we feel, and that would be more appropriate time for that because we're going to, we'll be having something before us to actually be able to tie to it. So, those are the two big items on this plat that I wanted to bring before you tonight in terms of access and crosswalks, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have. And this is just a preliminary plat, we don't have any site plans, you know, or anything at this point.
We discussed this in some length at our afternoon meeting, I presume the meeting with the developer went well?
Yes, sir. This is, this is what their plan noted, was one leg with each corner lot, and pink's a green and shaking is hideous, so.
Seeing Mr. Smith give me a nod back there.
Yes, sir.
Any questions or comments? No, we're ready for a motion.
Other questions, comments, Chairman Lam, move for folks to ask staff comment.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. We'll move on now to new business, we have one item under new business tonight, that is the zoning change request to amend fifteen point eight acre portion of Emerald Place PUD, total of twenty-seven point three five acres, and rename said portion of development to Copperfield, located along Last Cassis Pike, HDK Partners Avenue. Ms. Ealy, good evening to you.
Thank you, good evening to you Chairman Lam, Planning Commission members. This item of new business is a request from the property owner to amend the current PUD, Planned Unit District Zone. The property is located along the western side of Last Cassis Pike, just south of the villages of Garrison Cove. You may remember this property because you rezoned it to PUD in two thousand and eight, and at that time, it's being, it was being referred to as Emerald Place. And the request is specifically to a fifteen point eight acre portion of the total twenty-seven point three five acres. If you look at the map, you see the entire area shaded blue, and that's what is the PUD, and that's what we know as Emerald Place. The area that's hatched is the fifteen point eight acre portion that the applicant is requesting for you to amend, and that hatched area is located along the northern half of this property. The property is to the western zone RS15 and is the Garrison Cove subdivision. The villages of Garrison Cove are to the north, and those are zoned RSZ for zero lot line. Last Cassis Pike runs along the eastern property line of the subject area, and just, and then the property sits south or zone CIA, French Commercial District, and there's a grocery store, Food Lion just to the south, and Kroger is that PCD, Plain Commercial District on the map that you see. The current PUD allows a mixed-use development in that it allows various types of use on this one area. There is an area designated as self-storage, and if you've been out to this area, you may have seen that construction has begun on the self-storage, or some people refer to that as mini-storage. There's also a site for a future fast-food restaurant, and then there is an area for some commercial strip center type development. And then the area that's hatched blue, which they're asking for you to recommend amending, currently the PUD allows sixty-one condominium units on that fifteen point eight acres, and so that's a total density of three point eight six dwelling units per acre. And just to run down some of what the current plan allows, I'll just go ahead and give you some details. The minimum square footage of each of the condominium units as currently allowed is fourteen hundred square feet. The area is to be served with private streets and sidewalks and to have underground utilities, street trees, decorative street lighting, visitor parking, and open air pavilion, open space and a walking trail that connects to the commercial development to the south. A minimum of a Type C buffer is to be placed adjacent to the existing residential area. The units are to be primarily brick with siding used only as accents. And single-story construction was only to be used at the west end of the property, and that's the buildings that would be closest to existing residential development. The proposed changes, the proposed amendment to the PUD would no longer allow condominiums, but then would allow multifamily dwellings, so apartment community. And so, that would be a maximum of two hundred and forty units of a multifamily apartment community, and then the density would go from three point eight six dwelling units per acre to fifteen point two dwelling units per acre. They have proposed amenities, and those include forty-four percent open space, a nineteen hundred square foot pool, pocket parks with places for grilling and picnic areas, a playground, and are connected pathways in the common open space, bicycle racks, and this will be new for Planning Commission, and electric car charging stations integrated into some of the carports. So, as you know, Rutherford County, we're one of the rare, I guess, communities that get to participate in producing these electric vehicles, the Leaf Nissan's going to be producing a Leaf. And to be proactive and forward-thinking, the developer thinks that it would be an excellent idea to incorporate those electric car charging stations so that they could support our community and our economy and the potential growth of electric cars. So, that's something new that you can think about. Let's see, they're also going to be having the buffer between existing residential and the site, it's going to remain a Type C buffer, so they're not decreasing that. And the applicant is continuing to work with staff, I mean, as late as today, we had a meeting to improve the architecture of the buildings. You can see that there's some renderings, and those are continually being improved. I did want to note that the applicants would also like to hold a neighborhood meeting on November sixteenth. They'd like to involve the community in this process before the public hearing to give people who are interested in the proposed change an opportunity to get together, to see what the request is and to maybe provide some valuable input. So, if they do, of course, if you think it's a good idea, then they'd like to move forward and schedule a public hearing for November sixteenth. The, um, there's a presentation that Mr. Kevin Gunther would like to give you regarding the property, but it would be appropriate, if you feel so, to schedule a public hearing for December first. But at this time, I'd like to invite Kevin Gunther up and let him go over some of the details of the design and why they thought this design through.
Thank you, Ms. Ealy, and good evening Chairman Lam and Planning Commissioners. I'm going to go ahead and get this slide shift started. I think the staff are covering this topic well as it relates to what is there now and what we're proposing to change. As Ms. Ealy had pointed out, the commercial portion of Emerald Place and all the architectural standards, all the design guidelines, all the required landscape that's been approved, that would remain unchanged. What we would like to change relates to that portion of the multifamily on the north side of the site. And if I could, yes, there we go, get the aerial pulled up. This image that you see on the screen shows what we are proposing for Copperfield with the apartments in connection with what's already proposed on the south side of the site. It also kind of shows you the transition between the commercial and the existing single-family residential. And as been pointed out in the past regarding multifamily, we feel that multifamily can actually act as a transition between the commercial and the single-family, and sometimes if it's done right, and we're proposing this is, it can actually create that transition zone. I'd also like to point out that there have been improvements made on the Last Cassis Pike as it relates to the intersection where Garrison Cove comes in, and that would be immediately across Last Cassis Pike from our project, and there is an existing improvement that's gone in there as far as a three-lane, one lane in, two lane out entrance to our project. So, there have been existing infrastructure improvements made that would help facilitate the project. This is just a quick slide to show you what has been already approved as far as those condominium units on Emerald Place. Getting into the site plan, I'd like to cover some things as it relates to the layout of this plan and how we carefully place some of these buildings. We realize that we do have single-family residential near the site or right adjacent to the site. So, one of the things we did, if you look at that illustration, you'll see that the center portion of the buildings, the D buildings, if you will, those are the three-story buildings. As you proceed to the north, the C buildings actually go down to a two-story building. And then we have closed carports, these wouldn't be open carports, they'd be closed, so they'd be structures along with a Type C buffer between us and the adjoining property to the north. A similar approach was taken on the west side where we're close to residential in that, there again, there's a C building, which is the two-story building, and then you go to the D and the B buildings, which are three-story. And the point that I'm making is that we've taken the three-story buildings and placed them at the core of the site so that we have a transition in height from a three and a two-story and then to the carport and added with the landscape buffer on the perimeter. We've also increased the distance from Last Cassis Pike that would have been placed as far as the condominiums go. There is no large structure right off the main Last Cassis Pike entrance. In fact, what we've done is we've created the clubhouse and the amenities center and the added landscape, that's really the focal point that we've created at the entrance. So, instead of seeing the, you know, the condominiums line the entranceway, we are setting back all the structures quite a distance from Last Cassis Pike, so we're adding distance as well as creating a stronger focal point. We feel that that would actually be an improvement on the view shed. Even though there's a higher density, we realize that we are saying that this is going to be a very appealing project as you, as you would examine it from Last Cassis Pike. And I'm going to show you two illustrations with this in mind. As Ms. Ealy had pointed out, the architecture is currently going through additional enhancements. What we have in the packet that you see is what we believe is a good framework to start from, but we believe we'd like to add more details, we'd like to add more enhancements to that architecture, and we're working closely with staff to do that. And we'd also like to show this image to you, which is the view that you would see from the left-turn lane on Last Cassis Pike if you were turning into the project. And as you can see, the distance from the main road and the clubhouse as a focal point, we feel would be actually an appealing view shed. One last item that I'd like to address with you as far as your booklets go. There is a, and the very last sheet in the booklet relates to some buffer plans that were proposed on the Emerald Place, and I'd like you to strike that if you would from the booklet in your mind that was erroneously pulled from the old document, my apologies for that. We're working with staff on making sure that there's a Type C buffer all the way around the perimeter of the project, especially adjacent to residential. But instead of what that sheet is trying to communicate, which doesn't, it relates to the old plan, and it shouldn't have been put in there, what we're doing now is we're, as I said, we're creating greater distance from the road, we're using the amenities and the clubhouse as a focal point, and we're adding some enhancements as far as landscape. So, that is the remainder of my explanation of what we have for you, but I'm here to answer any questions, as well as Mr. Steve Dotson representing the developer and Mr. Bernie Weinstein as related to architecture.
Any questions this time?
Chairman Lam, before you all get started with questions, and you may have none today, we have been, we've had several sessions as a staff members with the design team. We've identified to them that the neighborhood across the street is very interested in what goes on around it, that they will routinely participate in zoning decisions, so we expect that they will participate in a public hearing. They understood from the get-go that they needed to maybe create a development that's a little bit of a cut above. And I think what they're trying to do, and I'm more familiar with it than you all are because I've been seeing it, I've had the discussions, I'm convinced that they're looking at creating a quality development here. All the same, they realized that they need to go and meet with the neighborhood and hopefully to gain their buy-in. Either meet them before the public hearing or meet them at the public hearing, it's going to be one way or the other, and they have chosen to meet them before the public hearing. And we've tentatively reserved a room at the John Pittard Elementary for November sixteenth at seven o'clock. Now, tomorrow we begin the process of notifying, because I wanted to wait till the public hearing was scheduled so that we could announce the public hearing date at the neighborhood meeting, so that there wouldn't be any uncertainties, so we can give a very specific date. So, we will be contacting representatives of the Owners Association, they'll have it worked out. We'll talk to them about the area in particular that they need to send notices to. Repeatedly, we tried to give them to send two hundred to five hundred feet, the same radius that the city was seeing if it was, maybe a little bit more. So, we'll be getting that out. A couple of things about this plan that I want you to know. One is that the, although this would be an amendment to the plan development, if it were zoned RM16, there would be amenities that would qualify for density bonus that they're not taking advantage of. And in fact, on page seventeen, it gives a little bit of a comparison about that. They were going to be putting some quality amenities in this development that I think would enhance it for any development. The architecture that you see in the plan is not finished. Even this morning, we sat down and they showed us some things that, after discussing with Ms. Logan, that they felt that they could do to improve their plans, and I think that I was very much impressed that they would improve the plans. The kind of architectural detail that would make a plane project a much, much better project and add quality to it. We've been very careful to look at how this property relates to the adjacent properties. Mr. Gunther touched on it, but I want to elaborate just a little bit. For the area, particularly to the south of the existing subdivision, they've lowered. the buildings to two-story. Now bear in mind, a three-story building can be built in 35 foot. If this property were zoned RM16, they would have the ability to build to 35 foot. The property at next door, zoned RMZ, could build to 35 foot. As this plan development, they're choosing to take and set back from the property line almost 100 feet for their buildings and keep them at a two-story level adjacent to the residential. I think that's a big plus for any, for any development. What, what the idea there is, they're going to keep balconies from overreaching into somebody's backyard and having a view into somebody's backyard. They're just designing that out. And that's something I hope that we can show the neighbors, that that's something we're trying to protect them with. They deliberately put the parking lot between the buildings and the property lines to add to that separation. The parking lot itself, the hard surface of the parking lot, not including the landscaping and not including the sidewalk, is about 60 foot. So you can get an idea, that's right at 100-foot separation. Also with the carports on the south side of the subdivision where the charging stations would potentially be located, they're putting those there because they have a tendency to create a wall that will help decrease sound and supplement that with the type C buffer. It will be a much better buffer. I've often said the best buffer is distance and if you don't have distance, put a very good vegetated screen or a very good fence. They're doing, they're doing all three. So I think they're, they're, they're making this, they're trying to design something that will fit. We'll have the neighborhood meeting and what we've done is we've deliberately scheduled the, the neighborhood meeting before our next planning commission meeting. So what I intend to do is to go ahead and include this on the agenda for the 17th. But if there's no changes to be made, we'll strike it from the agenda. That way, if we need to discuss it some more with you, if something comes out of it big at the neighborhood meeting, we'll be in a position to maybe do. Now we'll have to be getting together that morning to be able to make that decision. But we've just, we're getting into the holidays and rather than prolong this and wait till the middle of the holidays, I wanted to catch this on the front end of it. The public hearing on December 1st will fit very good. Otherwise, it would be, you know, it would be getting us in the middle of the Christmas days and that would, would be a little bit uncomfortable for people. So those are my comments. We expect to be able to at least report to you on November 17th if there's something else we need to tell you.
Okay. We need a motion to set the public hearing for December 1st then?
Yes, sir.
Could I just ask, and you may be planning to do this, but would you have also, you know, some, like picture maybe like this of a three-story building and maybe like in the same picture also, you know, I want to see the three-story building but also see how it relates to the two-story building, you know, so I get that idea. You know, I need pictures.
Actually, that would probably be very helpful for the neighborhood meeting as well.
I think, yes, Ms. Jones, I think we, we need to come up with a graphic tool, I think, that shows what you're describing. I think the thing that I am looking at right now is that some type of section, if you will, through the property that kind of communicates the distances and the relationships of three and two-story buildings and I think would be really helpful. So I think we'd like to have that not only for the neighborhood meeting but also to communicate to the planning commission.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ready for a motion?
Motion to set a public hearing for December 1st?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
That completes the new business portion of our agenda. We're ready for staff comments on other business. Ms. Radeau-Lott, do you have anything?
No, sir, nothing in particular, but I will remind you that if you have not got your education talked to, for the year, talk to Mr. Lewis, he'll help you get films or something.
I have something.
Oh, good.
Mr. Radeau-Lott may not remember our conversation from earlier today, but we have a plat that was come before you tonight that we've been asked to have you all review, a three-lot final plat for the Cathy property. And I'll come and hand it out to you. I got it just at 4:30, so.
I had about forgot and when Ms. Logan spoke up, I was.
Logan didn't tell me that before the meeting.
No, I didn't.
You forgot too, didn't you?
No, I just thought he would, I don't, next time I'll make sure I tell you.
We could share Margaret in.
Let me tell you a little bit about what's going on with this property. Y'all have seen this property several times before in different formats and fashions and let me kind of try to explain for you as quickly and succinctly as I can the situation. And if you'll recall, you have reviewed preliminary plats for what is shown on this property as Lot 1 and Lot 2 that showed roadways being constructed, there were going to be two cul-de-sacs that were going to be constructed, there was going to be common drainage easements and common detention ponds that were constructed, there were going to be commercial lots constructed. And then they were adding Lot 3, they also own Lot 3, which fronts on Gresham Lane and they were going to add that to those properties through, through like a little dog leg to be able to provide that property with sewer. They have, like a lot of people unfortunately in this economy, have found themselves in a, I guess, an unfortunate financial situation which requires them to try to sell some of this property pretty quickly. And they are not, they had those preliminary plats approved, they had the final plats approved for those properties previously, but they never followed through with construction of any of those improvements. So really, it's still raw land because those plats were never recorded. And staff had asked for a preliminary plat on this when we reviewed it last week in staff review because they were showing sewer for that Lot 3 and sewer easements and detention easements and certain other elements that would necessitate a preliminary plat. The design engineer came in and met with Mr. Radeau-Lott and they had a discussion that if they were to remove the easements and remove any public improvements, including sewer, that it could go as a straight three-lot final plat subdivision and would not require a preliminary plat and could be approved by you all tonight under other business. And now, what that means is that Lot 3, that the water and sewer department has looked at it and has said that, you know, currently as it is, it can be served on septic. And so as we move, and if that lot ever redevelops, of course, it'll have to come through sewer and then sewer, the sewer line construction and the sewer easements will be dedicated at that point in the future. But currently, that it could be served under septic. So Mr. Radeau-Lott and I will be glad to identify or answer any questions that you may have. There's a special notice on there for Lot 3 or a special certification on there for Lot 3 to be signed by the Rutherford County Health Department for that septic to service Lot 3, which it is being served by septic now. I mean, that's not a change, that's just a continuation of the existing essentially. But they would like to try to get this recorded so they can try to sell these properties in larger lot sizes moving forward.
And just one, one little thing that I want to add, and this is something that Mr. Ives and I will have to make a decision on, but, and that is the status of the parcel that's labeled as making away enterprises. And we're, we're, sitting right here right now, we're uncertain whether it should be reserved for future development, whether it should be identified as a lot and have the owner of that property sign the plat or leave it just like it is. And, and it can easily be any one of the three depending upon what Mr. Ives decides after he's stepped on the matter.
But it is a separate lot?
Well, about a year and a half ago, if I remember correctly the date, the owners here of this property sold that about 2.9 acre tract off. It was not subdivided. Without a plat, without it being subdivided, and the status of it is unclear, but it's, we make sure, we try to make sure we do it right.
We need to have the clarification of the status of that property before we sign it.
It needs to be a lot.
Yeah, it, yes, and whether it needs to be a separate, a separate plat or a separate lot or, I mean, there's, there's different ways for us to handle it and I think that's what we're trying to, you know, we were working on it before as a separate, we were going to make it as a separate plat when we were looking at it before, but that's been, like Mr. Ives said, at least a year ago. And just, you know, what happened was they went and transferred that property through deed and did not plat it, which in the state of Tennessee, anything under five acres, any property transfer, if you divide off five acres, less or less than five acres, you think, most should have a subdivision plat that accompanies that. And I'm not real sure how all that took place, but anyways, I'm.
Well, one thing more.
I don't do closings, I just repeat.
We're not today certain as to the ownership status of that property, who owns it and how accessible they are to being able to sign any documents.
So how would we approve this tonight? Is that a part of this lot too?
No, it is not.
As it's drawn now, it's not a part of it. But by approving, I mean, right now, we've got some tracts out there with one parcel carved off as an illegal subdivision.
So this little.
This would be recognizing part of it, but not fixing the problem of the illegal subdivision. And I, I would question whether we should facilitate anything that doesn't cure the illegal subdivision issue. The owners of this tract are the ones that created that problem and I'm, I really question whether we should do anything that, allow them to do anything else that doesn't cure that. That's not a final decision, but it's, it's something we're going to have to look at quickly and carefully to make sure that we don't compound the problem.
On the location map, top right corner, the design engineer has indicated that parcel being part of the overall tract, it appears to me from looking at that.
It, it would cover that area in. Of course, it's just a location map to show you where it is.
Yeah, I understand that, but in trying to, this is a very confusing plat for us right here. When, when we first sat here and looked at it being put upon us at this late hour, you know, it's, it's difficult to be able to figure out how to inherit this thing.
Shouldn't you just draw four on that one and put a circle around it and have them on over there signing and take care of the problem?
Wasn't this the same parcel where we had some discussion about no access to Gresham Lane and on a previous plat or?
That lot with the main.
That would be on site plan approval.
Right.
Ms. Radeau-Lott came, is there a big rush about doing this tonight, today?
The surveyor on the project appealed very much to Ms. Logan and I that we get in action to the point where between now and the 16th, they could get the property recorded if they can get things to come together with the Sees Department, legal department reviewing it.
Well, I appreciate their urgency, but I don't appreciate this coming in at the last minute to try to run it through when we don't have an opportunity to really examine this and.
In that case, we'll pull this off the agenda right now.
At the furl.
It's off, there's no need, we, we were under the impression things were a little more clarifying.
Thank you very much. Ms. Logan, do you have anything else tonight?
No, sir.
Nope.
Nada.
Ms. Radeau-Lott, did you have any other staff reports or other business?
No, sir, but like I said.
And for the business, we stand adjourned.